We need a proceed advance.
The County Board of Supervisors April fifteenth meeting notice and agenda was posted in the Government Center Building in two places and posted on the county website on Thursday, April tenth, twenty twenty four. In addition, on Thursday, April tenth, twenty twenty four, two thirty two P. M., the Office of the County Clerk distributed copies of such notice and meeting to supervisors via email.
That's how it comes.
That is proper notes.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Brad Olson.
Here.
Doug Rowdy.
Here.
Steve Warren.
If he's on the phone or something.
He's on there. Pam Garvey.
Here.
Tracy LeBlanc.
Here.
Dan Ruck.
Here.
Sharon Kelly.
Here.
Jeremy Hall.
Here.
Kim O'Connell.
Here.
Tony Johnson.
Here.
Jay Luke.
Here.
Frances Duncanson.
Here.
Russ Arkand.
Here.
Keith Thorpinski.
Here.
And John Bonnapreis.
Here.
Everybody should be here. Steve can.
Very pleased, ladies and please. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd also like to ask you to observe a moment of silence for Richard, I mean for Michael Pritchard, who passed away, was on the board with most of us, or some of us anyway. If we could just have a please for a moment of silence for Mike. Thank you. Need a motion on the agenda with one small change on under nine. I want to move D to between A and B.
I make a motion that we accept this agenda with the accepted change. The between A and B.
I'll second.
Min- min- and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All the same sign. Let's take a look at the matters offered for adoption on the consent agenda. Need a motion on them.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Hearing none. Move them. All right. Public comment, please. Three minutes. Hearing none will move to eight. Committee of the whole, committee of the whole on a discussion in reference to Resolution fourteen twenty five in the library. You know, open to committee with the whole.
Move into committee of the whole. Second.
May the committee of the whole, any discussion on that? All in favor? Aye. Sign.
Aye.
Who wants to start this? You guys looking at each other.
This was brought up through general government that wanted this discussion for the library plan, adopting the library plan on committee of the whole. With this, again, this is just the library plan that we're approving with the resolution and not, not funding at this point.
There's no funding involved.
Correct. That'll come at the process, the general government, and then to the board on the final percentage.
Okay.
So the plan does contemplate an amount as a goal for the county board to assess, but that percentage in the plan does not obligate the county necessarily to that amount of funding. So the plan itself has a goal set of funding at a hundred percent for internal county libraries. That does not obligate the county to fund at that rate. That funding gets determined later during the budget process.
Okay, then, in the discussion of, of the fourteen twenty five, there's no action to move on, on nine then.
So on eight, it's for all of you to discuss what's in the plan and discuss whether you like the plan, don't like the plan, what you do like, what you don't like, et cetera, if you want to talk about that. Once you come out of the committee of the whole, it's an up or down vote. If you vote down, it goes back to the library committee for continued contemplation of modifications to the plan.
Okay.
What's the obligation? What's the obligation for the county funding percent?
County has to fund at seventy percent. That's the minimum statutory amount, both for internal and external libraries, with seventy percent.
Can I ask?
Okay, go ahead.
And what do we fund the external ones today?
I think we fund external at seventy.
Ninety-five.
Ninety-five. The internal ones are seventy, external ones, or internal ones are ninety-five, internal ones are ninety-five.
Or a hundred and externals are ninety-five.
Internals are ninety-five, externals are at seventy percent.
Rem, where are they?
I think it's important to clarify that the county, this isn't county money or county funds. The county is a pass-through. Whatever rate the county sets gets levied upon the townships. The township pays to the money, to the money. Pays the money out to the municipalities. So the level of funding has no bearing whatsoever on money that the county gets to spend. So if the county decreases library funding, that doesn't give the county any additional monies to spend. Because the county was merely a cross through. Turns around and pays it out to the municipalities with libraries. So it's, it's really the townships in the village of Clayton that pay the money. And that would be, again, for the cost of providing their residents with that service. So, you know, too, you know, I just, I want to really emphasize that I think it's really important that everybody, you know, recognizes that the villages and cities want people from the townships to come into the city and the village, want them to use our services, want them to use the libraries. This is kind of a fair share type of thing. You know, an example I'll use is that in the city of Amory, I believe it is sixty-five or sixty-nine percent are not, do not live in the city limits. They live outside of the city limits and come in to use the library, which is good because when they come in to do that, they enjoy other things in the city and they patronize our businesses. So I just wanted to make that clear. That seems to be a point of confusion amongst people. It doesn't give the county any additional funds to, to fund anything with, being that the county is just a pass-through.
All taxpayer money.
Yeah. Do the, do the towns and the village, do they vote on how, what, how much money they want to allocate to the libraries?
No. The county board by statute, by statutes, the county board is who sets the rate. So like for, I'll just throw out there as an example, if you represent only towns, then a lower rate saves your citizens money. There's less of a levy that goes out to your citizens. But in turn, if you represent a city or a village that has a public library, you're, they are defunded by a lower rate because they have to pay more of the cost of the people outside coming in to use the library. If that, if that costs them too much, then what happens is they have to consider cutting services and cutting programs because the, the city and village taxpayers can't necessarily pick up this, pick up the difference. You know, especially if they're, they're used to a certain level of funding and then they're defunding. You know, if the libraries get defunded, well, then they're going to have to start to cut things. Is the way that may or may not end up because with levy limits, I don't think that the cities and villages can make up that, that difference. So it's, you know, kind of a fair share type, type of thing is the way that I look at it.
Kim, did you have something?
Well, I just, the change from last time, is that, that is the page eleven, is that where you put?
Yeah, I highlighted that. And that refers to the village of Turtle Lake, which lies in two counties.
Okay, it's. So then the question was, on that number two, it's, it's the adjacent counties we pay seventy percent. I don't see where it says the ninety-five, where it was, it wants to go to a hundred.
That would be.
This is the, I think it's always been the plan to fund it at a hundred, but we only approve in the budget ninety-five percent.
Up to that, yes. Because it started at seventy, we've been doing it over the years, slowly going up.
So the hundred percent has been in the plan for quite some time.
Okay. So even if we approve this, the hundred percent isn't in there till budget time.
It does not specifically obligate you to fund at a hundred percent. When you fund it, it'll be through the budget process. It's, it's under priorities and strategies. It's a goal.
Yep.
It's aspirational.
Dan?
Is, is not binding.
Dan, what do you have?
I certainly understand all that. My problem with it is, is it sends a message. If we approve it, we're sending a bit of a mixed message as to whether that, and this has been, I've been on the board now for six years and it's been fed back to me every year that we're supposed to be at a hundred, that we're supposed to be at a hundred, that we're supposed to be at a hundred. That sends a mixed message to our constituents. We're only approving at ninety-five. I don't like the verbiage of it. I don't necessarily like the way it was presented, and it certainly is a taxpayer burden, no matter how you want to look where it goes through. It's our constituents that are paying that bill. And I think any organization has to have skin in the game in order to be doing their job and manage properly. And I think by trying to fund at a hundred percent, not doing justice to our constituents. Unless your constituents are in a city or a village that runs a library, that provides services to your citizens. So it all depends on who your constituents are, as to how that shakes up.
Joe, move, James, Jay. Yep, go ahead.
Well, I, I guess just looking at this, we consider just striking that one hundred percent and just leave it, say something like, well, I would say exactly, provide reimbursement to each library established under chapter forty-three. Just leave that percentage out and, you know, not have it as a goal, just set that each year budget time.
So the plan is developed by the library committee. Theoretically, if this board wanted to give some direction to the library committee, you could, when you vote, when we come out of committee of the whole, vote down the plan with direction to the committee that the board wants to see X, Y, and Z. I don't believe that there's any specific obligation that a goal percentage be set in the funding. It generally is in there, but, for example, Barron County's plan dictates more or less what they expect their budget to actually look like, to Dan Rock's point. I think they highlight, we're going to start at seventy-five percent and increase it by one percent each year, and I think they've followed that plan. Again, from my perspective, I don't believe they have to, because again, it is aspirational, but it is, that's what we planned to do, and that's what they've done so far. So whether you need to set a dollar amount or a percentage amount, I don't believe so, but you as the board don't get to amend and change the plan. You'd have to send it back down to the library committee for them to deliberate and decide whether or not they want to change the plan.
Can I ask Joe a question?
Go ahead.
On page nine, it's got the act one fifty calculation chart, and it was talking about twenty twenty four data for payment in twenty twenty five, and it lists a hundred percent funding. So is that, that kind of tells me that's, that's what they're expecting, a hundred percent funding?
I think you're reading something in there. I mean, because it's always, that's not a danger either. I think that's just, I think the goal of the committee, and I'm the committee chair, I think the goal of the committee was just to provide the information so, so you would know what that would look like. Would it be helpful to maybe change the language to provide reimbursement to each library established under chapter forty-three as outlined by statute with a goal of providing one hundred percent reimbursement? Does that provide further clarification or?
Guess I would have one more. If the, if the library is located in the city of Amory or the village of Osceola, isn't the city of Amory and the village gaining something financially as far as people coming into the city to use the library, probably also stop and use other services and spend money? There's a benefit to them having it. It, you know, it might make sense for them to have a pay, to have them pay a little more than the towns.
And that's certainly, you know, I respect that that's your opinion, Keith. Like I said, we want people from the townships to come into the city and to enjoy being in the city, buy their groceries, visit a restaurant. And you're a business owner in the city of Amory. You probably don't benefit a lot from people coming in to use the library, but you never know, you might. But that's money that goes to those private businesses. That is not money that comes to the city. So the, the benefit that the city sees, yes, I agree one hundred percent that there is a benefit. But it, it really is more of a kind of a trickle-down, you know, benefit. When you support the businesses, you help them so they can pay their taxes, you know. But yeah, I mean, I, I respect that's what your opinion is.
There you go. Johnny?
I was a volunteer on the whole kind of library when we had the library in a village here. And when we called that up, that was a, that was a budget concern. And then it seemed to be, like you say, very beneficial to the villages and cities where they had the, the library. But now, when people have brought it up to me, when they've seen this, and now there's so many people that go online, and there's so many different ways that they, they're in touch with, with the library without actually coming to the, to the village. There's a percentage of, the libraries keep a percentage of people that are local and everything, like Osceola, over fifty percent of the people that use the Osceola library live in Minnesota. And I, I like the idea that the, the city's got to be a big part of it. It's all, it's all our constituent taxpayer money, no matter how we do it. They have a voice out there. It's.
Is there anybody that isn't paid by the libraries that's on the board, library board? Are, are they all paid, are they all paid library employees on the board?
On library boards? On the county library board or on individual community libraries?
On the county library board, is it just directors, library directors?
It's not. There are also, I believe, a library board member who resides in the village of Balsamway. There is a retired school teacher who resides, I believe, in the Centaria area. Not sure if she's in the village limits or outside.
Well, it just said, I'm here, it says library and then the director at list. And then, that's just, is that who's on the board, is what I'm asking?
No, there's a separate list of board members. That should be in there as well.
Board members don't get paid at all, do they? The director does?
That's up to each individual municipality if they want to pay their library board members. We don't, we don't have anything to do with that. And the municipalities don't either. I mean, that's, the library board decides that, not a village board or a city council.
I would just always volunteer.
Yeah.
I leave and everything.
So here's, here's the, so yeah, so Sue Durkop lives in Centaria area. This is thirteen. Chris Serbaugh and Kelsey Dunn, I are not library directors. You know, this is something also that gets opened up to the general public. When it's time to appoint people to this, Mo makes those appointments from a list of people who have expressed interest. And Mo, I believe, don't you send that out to, what's your process for that? You send that out to all the local libraries and ask for them to?
Yes.
And then they post it in their libraries and make it known that they're, are looking for interested people to be on the county library committee. I actually was drafted without my knowledge to chair that committee. Jay just told me I was doing it. And that's okay. It worked out. That's fine.
Anybody else? More discretion? Now, listen to, moving back to the out of the committee as a whole.
I shall move.
Second.
Discussion reference to the movement. All in favor? Aye, all the same sign. Okay. Resolution fourteen twenty-five is now on the board for movement, action.
I'll make a motion to bring it to the floor. Motion, resolution fourteen twenty-five.
Bring it to what floor?
To the floor. For discussion.
Okay. Second.
Motion made and seconded to bring it to the floor for discussion only.
You want me to go?
Can I get a, I'd like to call a point of order.
You want to vote?
Vote.
Not, did you want to?
So we have a motion, a second, to bring it to the floor. There was no vote to bring it to the floor yet.
I know, but you want, I moved to bring it to the floor.
And I call the point of order to ask for a roll call vote.
We need a motion to bring it to the floor for discussion first. Right, so it's, it's being brought to the floor.
For discussion.
We have a motion.
For discussion.
Second, for discussion.
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Called for roll call vote. That on this part.
Yeah, and I'll call for it again, too.
For discussion only. All right, roll call vote.
Keith Thorpinski?
Yes.
John Bonnapreis?
Yes.
Point of order, the motion was for discussion, not to vote on the resolution.
Right, right, we understand that. Looking off in the discussion by roll call.
Yeah.
I understand.
Okay.
John Bonnapreis?
Yes.
Brad Olson?
Yes.
Doug Rowdy?
Yes.
Steve Warren.
Yes.
Pam Garvey?
Yes.
Tracy LeBlanc?
Yes.
Dan Ruck?
Yes.
Sharon Kelly?
Yes.
Jeremy Hall?
Yes.
Kim O'Connell?
Yes.
Tony Johnson?
Yes.
Frances Duncanson?
Yes.
Russ Arkand?
Yes.
And Jay Luke?
Yes.
All right, go ahead.
Well, I just, my point was then just to make sure that that number on page eleven, priorities and strategies, might have to be rewritten. Because the one was changed, that was brought up, adjacent counties aren't seventy percent. Well, that's what it says. I'm just reading what it says. Don't argue.
Oh, okay. Well, that should be corrected.
Is it right or not then?
No, it's not, because some of them are a hundred percent.
No, well, then, then the priorities.
One person speaks at a time after being recognized by the chair and speaks to the body.
So if it isn't right, that should be changed also then. So there might, you know, what other problems do we have with it? We've had a few other ones about the hundred percent. You should send it back and have them redo it. It's my thought.
So you want a hundred percent removed from a?
I would like the whole plan go back, and then they could decide what to put in. Is, is my thoughts. Because if the seventy percent isn't right, the hundred isn't right either.
So.
Okay. Fran, do you have any more discussion?
Yeah, so, Kim, just so I understand that we're on the same page, to maintain the reimbursement rate to libraries in adjacent counties at a rate of seventy percent. So let's clarify what that means, because now that you brought it up, I, I want to have it clear in my own mind as well.
Yeah, because I don't, that's what I.
What we have, the language that we added to accommodate the village of Turtle Lake Library being in an adjacent county, that they get paid the same rate as the other Polk County libraries, does that, Joe, in your opinion, does that conflict with that?
You have a question again? I apologize.
Okay, so I'm looking on page eleven, number two, to maintain the reimbursement rate to libraries in adjacent counties at a rate of seventy percent. So if the rate is ninety-five, then we pay, would pay, we changed one of those two words in whose location is in Holer, Parton, Polk County, right above that in yellow, to reflect that they would be paid the same rate as the other libraries in Polk County. So now that Kim has very tentatively brought this up, so does that conflict, the seventy percent conflict with us providing the whose location?
No, I, I don't really see how, the language that was changed and the purpose of the language change was to try to clarify that the intent of the plan, as well as the intent of the board, was to encompass library in Turtle Lake as well. The opinion of Corporation Council at the committee meeting was that the library in Turtle Lake is in a municipality, that is, municipality is partially within the county, but the library is not within the county. Therefore, it would be an, a library being funded at seventy percent because it's a library located in an adjacent county. Language change that was contemplated at the, at the public hearing, and then, I believe subsequently approved by the library committee for purposes of the plan, was to clarify that the board was in fact incorporating Turtle Lake. The language in number two, under the priorities, maintain the reimbursement rate to libraries in adjacent counties at a rate of seventy percent. With the clarifying language, I suppose could be clarified more, but it does not necessarily directly counter the, the language change.
Is that what you meant, Kim? Does that answer your question?
No, I think it should be clarified better. It should say, if Turtle Lake is the only one, it should be written in here then, I think, because this, this is pretty muddled, muddled right here. Because it's in Barron, it's seventy percent. Seventy percent, I mean, and what does St. Croix pay us? St. Croix County or the other counties pay us? Okay, is that in here? Do we know that anywhere?
Well, that, that can change from year to year because those county boards set their own reimbursement rates. So we don't have any way of knowing in a five-year plan what they're going to do every year as far as their rates go, to even put it in the plan.
This discussion should have been ahead of committee as a whole. What's your, what's your wish on the resolution? What do you want to do?
I just brought it to the floor for discussion. Me, I'd like it to go back to, to verify some of these things. I think they should write it a little better. It's just my feeling.
Is there any other comment on reference to that? Is there any other comment on, reference to that?
Just one.
Go ahead.
Oh, I'm just a little bit uncomfortable with our goal being to make the people in the towns pay the same amount as the people in the, you know, in the villages and the city, because it's located in the village and the city. And they're currently not paying, you know, the same amount, and we're asking them to. So we're, we're moving money, it's coming in from the cities and the village out to people in the towns or the tax base, and the, the reasons is, or that, what was said was, well, the villages and the cities don't have the money, well, why do the towns have the money?
Yeah. Well, that, I mean, that's, that's fine, then, uh, then the services.
This should have been done.
If there isn't enough money.
Point of order.
Just point of order.
This should, who has the floor?
Heath does.
Okay.
And if we, if there's a discussion on it, we should go back to a, to a uh, a discussion.
Well, that, that's my concern with the, with the, with the contract, we'll call it. That it, that it is purposely asking the towns to pay more than they're currently paying. And I would like to see it go back to the um, library committee and remove any reference to percentages, and then we um, decide that at budget time.
Well, that should be done by amendment to the resolution.
So.
How do you want to do it, consternation?
So when discussion is over, someone can move to either approve the resolution or to send it back to the committee. So you can.
Just either or? No amendments?
No, you can't amend the plan at the board here today.
Your chair.
Johnny, I move that we send this resolution back to the committee.
To the library board.
Yep.
Second.
Alright. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm working on the resolution.
The, the motion was to send the resolution and the plan back to the.
The.
Plan back to the library committee?
Yeah.
Done. Done.
I was trying to call point of order to ask for a roll call.
Done.
Because I want to and I have a right to.
I'm sorry, what do you want to do?
I, I would like to ask for a roll call vote.
Roll call vote? To send it back?
Every board member has a right to have a roll call vote.
I understand.
Even after.
You hear us? All.
So this is a motion to send the resolution back to the library planning committee, John Bonaprise.
Yes.
Brad Olson?
Yes.
Doug Rowdy?
No.
Steve Wornall?
No.
Pam Garvey?
Yes.
Tracy LeBlanc?
Yes.
Dan Ruck?
Yes.
Sharon Kelly?
Yes.
Jeremy Hall?
Yes.
Kim O'Connell?
Yes.
Tony Johnson?
Yes.
Fran Dunkinson?
No.
Russ Arcand?
Yes.
Keith Karpinski?
Yes.
And Jay Luke?
Yes.
That's three noes and twelve yeses.
Nine B, resolution nine twenty-five.
Thirteen twenty-five.
This one are we on?
The one.
Well, thirty, yeah, the one we moved wrong. Thirteen twenty-five. Open.
Resolution thirteen twenty-five.
Second?
What's second that?
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pardon?
Well, I guess what's?
Discussion?
Why, why are some of these things not being purchased in the current, in the year that they're supposed to? Like office chairs for courtroom and stuff, that seems like. Many years' budget.
That one, I can't answer why, why they weren't purchased in twenty twenty-four. Uh, mostly these projects are outstanding on funds that weren't spent in that year. Uh, the, that seven thousand for the clerk of courts for office or courtroom chairs, I can't address that at this point.
I don't, I don't believe. But if we don't, we, and I don't, like, if some of these things aren't purchased, I mean.
Don, you might have an answer to that one.
Well, it's not absolutely certain, but I know that Rod Polk was looking for a lower cost vendor for the end of the year, and he, he found one. And we have been since purchasing uh, office equipment like chairs from a different vendor. I can't say specifically if that's the reason on the, on department chairs.
So will these allocated funds still be used for the same purpose?
Oh, absolutely.
Or does it just go back into their pockets to spend on?
No, uh, uh, Supervisor Hall, it, it, it's, it can only be used for the intended purpose.
Any more discussion? All in favor of the resolutions? All the same side? Oh, B. Now we're on B. Resolution nine twenty-five. As we're just, our resolution, everybody's got a copy, wishes.
A motion to bring it to the floor for discussion. I made to bring it to the floor for discussion.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor for discussion? Go ahead, what do you want to know?
Hearing no discussion, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We better.
We want that little special one.
Alright, now they're, alright, they're. Alright. Make a motion.
I just did.
Alright, motion to approve.
Seconded.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Alfie?
Yeah.
I got you. Resolution ten twenty-five.
Don't. You don't want to get in trouble.
Made a motion to approve.
Seconded.
Any discussion?
Hearing none? I would ask what allocating, I'm not positive. What funds are we reallocating?
This was, this was a change to the resolution for the uh, the PTAG fund, funding. Uh, their, the current resolution had it as, it can only be used for any remaining funds as new, new trail development. Um, this resolution amends that and gives the ability to use it for our, our county parks and trails. Um, so we have more flexibility with the fund.
Pretty much clarification. Any more discussion? Motion to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, one. Ten seconds. You want to approve? It was.
Yeah, it was a motion to approve.
Discussion.
You got it on discussion.
You got to get it on discussions.
Yeah. Alright. That completes our resolutions. Confirmation appointment by the county board chairman, there's no one to appoint. Number eleven confirmation appointments made by county administrator.
I have none this month.
appointments. County board chair report. Been quiet. That's what's standing, that you don't know. County administrator report.
Yes, Mr. Chair, there's a few things I reported to committees. Uh, sales tax overall is still up five point one percent from twenty twenty-four in March. March was still down though, seven percent from twenty twenty-four. Uh, County Road B road construction project from thirty-five to Atlas kicked off mid- met April here. Uh, we opened bids for the D.D. Kennedy Walking Bridge, and that went to Larson Construction, is finally moving forward after five years. The Clamballs Dam actuators and gates are now due mid-May. That postponed among. Uh, the grandstand, we had our final comments back from the Fair Society um, a couple weeks ago, so those should be going out here before the end of April, our bids on that one. We are still watching executive orders. I reported to the committees that we had two that were stopped, the RISE grant for immunizing kits and COVID nineteen remaining funds for forty-nine thousand were stopped. Uh, since then, those have been reissued again. Uh, the COVID supplement funds for forty-nine thousand to twenty-five ends now June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, we can charge to that. And the RISE grant remain, remaining funding of twenty-four thousand ends June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five also. And along with that, we did receive the contract and the, the ARPA carryover funding for two hundred and fourteen thousand seventy-seven dollars. And we can charge to that grant until September thirtieth of twenty twenty-six. Um, we did have a youth sent to the Lincoln Hills uh, facility. Um, I reported to the committees. That right there is gonna cost us until June thirtieth, one thousand two hundred and sixty-eight dollars per day. After that, the uh, budget looks like it'll go to twenty-three oh five. And then uh, the remaining part of this year, that'll cost us about five hundred and thirty-eight thousand, which until that person ages out, is about one point six million dollars hit to our budget. And there is some reconciliation with the state, but very minimal on that. So, we'll see how that goes there. Uh, the Public Works Public Safety Meeting for May sixth is at the Recycling Center at two o'clock. There will be a tour of the construction work there at one-thirty prior to that. Supervisor Bonaprise will be bringing cookies for that one. So, I did email out to the um, the fire in the laundry room, that's been repaired and the new laundry um, dryer is in. The uh, Chrysler Ad Hoc Committee with the legislators, that summit has been set now for May twenty-third and a time is uh, twelve-thirty to three o'clock, held in Rice Lake at the Northwood Technical College. If you, it's been sent out to the HHAS, HHS committee. If you'd like to attend that, let me know, I will get you the contact information to sign up for it. That is on a Friday. And then currently, our jail population is about uh, hundred and thirteen currently. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Can we ask a question?
Go ahead.
You asked a question? Did, could, could, I don't remember, maybe I missed it. Um, I know we had some discussion some time ago about the work from home here in, in this building. It is the question I mostly have, is um, has there been any changes, are we having more people come back to work? Uh, I, I don't know, I know the directors, it was gonna go into the directors realm, but have they given any updates to you as far as, do we have more people actually working back at work now?
So there's more people here, it's, it's monitored um, weekly on their, on their production, if they're not producing the ones that are on remote schedules, get pulled back on those schedules. Um, the data was presented to the general government uh, last, their last meeting.
Oh, okay.
Um, so it's being monitored um, on a day, case by case basis still.
And everybody seems to be happy with what's going on now? I mean, it's.
Yes, um, I've heard, I haven't heard any complaints about um, not having callbacks or anything like that, or not being available uh, for workloads, so. Um, it, it's been working and they've been monitoring that for their production by individuals.
It just, you know, we spent eight million dollars on a building and then we didn't have people here, it's like, really?
Does anybody have any announcements, supervisors on reports of meetings you may have attended of interest? Six. Okay. Um, Doug does, go ahead.
I just have a quick, because Mo mentioned the bridge, Kennedy, I have a quick update on the Straight River. And the Ice Age Trail comes out on Highway forty-eight and crosses. And at this point, they go down to ninety-fifth, and then they go across the bridge to get back onto the trail. Right. Well, now, one of the citizens that owns a fourty right there on the river, at the, right on forty-eight, he's donating land to the Ice Age Trail, so that it can come out onto ninety-fifth, cross ninety-fifth. And then they're gonna put in a new bridge to cross the Straight River. And at our meeting, at our public safety and highway, or uh, Public Works meeting, Rod said it took them five years to get a, to get the bridge okayed. And supposedly Ice Age Trail has it approved for September. That's just an update for them.
It'd be next year.
Mr. Chair? Sir Chair, just two more, two more updates, I forgot. Um, we did have two, two areas that had critical culverts evaluated by engineers that wanted uh, road postings put on them. One is County Road I, under Summers Creek, just south of Ninetieth there. Uh, we posted down to five tons till we get the culverts in to replace those. Um, and we have a similar situation down on P. Um, down there, so you'll see uh, some.
Five ton also.
Five, that'll be a five ton also. Um, we have one engineer, engineer recommending closing the road. We have another one recommending five tons, so we're just trying to get clarification from Virginia. The Bureau of Structures from the state on clearance of that one.
Brad, did you have something to add?
Yep, um, so I've attended a number of meetings, but the, what I'm gonna mention is the Polk County Historical Society and Museum, if you've never visited there, go in and visit, it is absolutely incredible uh, the things and the history that are there. Um, I also am going to be giving a historical presentation on Polk County lumber baron, uh, John Wesley Purley. Uh, and his life in Polk County, I've never done this before. So I'm afraid no one is going to show up. So, tell, tell your friends and neighbors that uh, maybe somebody will be there besides my husband.
Anybody else? Johnny?
I would, as I made the announcement here a couple weeks ago, the uh, Health and Human Services, uh, uh, I'm on the steering committee, and we met uh, last Friday, and I came up to the boardroom here. It was a two and a half hour meeting. Um, I guess the highlights is we're still trying to uh, to uh, close Lincoln Hills, which is basically condemned. Lincoln Hills and Wapon are both scheduled to close. And we have three new juvenile and adult facilities. As they're gonna be opening up, one in Racine, one in Madison, and another one in Mendota. So, um, there was some talk about shared revenue, which I believe the regu- the legislature is gonna pass again, and that's one of the big benefits of it. You got any idea how much our shared revenue we did get last year?
Do you have that number? I can't find it right now, I will let everyone know after the meeting.
You got a rough idea?
Seven hundred thousand.
Yeah. I knew it was overhappened, you know. Otherwise, um, yeah, everything went good, yeah. We, so far, we don't have uh, any resolutions popping up that I'd be taking to the uh, uh, state convention, but I'm sure there'll be some.
Hey, anyone else?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made.
I'll second it.
And seconded to adjourn. Discussion? All in favor of the.
Aye.
Aye. He, manual meeting.
Well, I won't make you ask, I don't think I will. It's not like environmental service at the.